I call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting at 6:35. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody recording this evening? It's okay to do, you just gotta let us know. Okay, not seeing any, thank you. First thing, we're gonna start off with the Selectmen's comments. We have our senior work-off program. We have five applicants so far, and there's thirteen open slots. So if you're looking to try to save money on your taxes, if you're over sixty-five, you can do that with some financial documentation. Also, in a minute, we'll introduce the members from the Robinson-Broathurst who generously donate to this town over the amount of eight-hundred thousand dollars, and I'd like to introduce them to the new board.
The Robinson-Broathurst Foundation, we just wanna fill everybody in a little history. Was started in nineteen eighty-four on the death of Anna Robinson-Broathurst and Avery Robinson. They both died very close to one another. They left their estate to form a foundation, and we're part of the foundation. Skip Parks and myself are the two local trustees. There are three other trustees, they're all in New York. We have, in-town, advisory members, people who help us go over the applications and guide us a little bit. And there Cindy Landano and Glenn Hunt, they assist us. At our annual meeting in May, we had in excess of fifty-five million dollars in trust. We give out five percent of our gross every year. It's not interest, it's not income, it's five percent of the total every year we have to give out. It's an IRS ruling. If we don't give it out, we give it to the IRS, and I'd rather have Winchandon have it than the IRS. So, that's what happens. We can't give to individuals. We give to the town, we give to churches, 501(c)(3) organizations, charitable organizations we give to. This past year, we funded various projects for the town. I think that, I know the Courier had a list of recipients, but not what the projects were. So, let me fill you in a little bit what the town projects were that we funded. New voting devices, which we also are about three weeks ago, push the button, and Skip and I were there, and we worked it, we were able to work it. We're not computer savvy too much, but we worked it. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. The G.A.R. Park up near Old Murdoch, we're gonna fix the cannons, cut the trees, fix it up. It needs a lot of repair, the park needs a lot of help. The animal shelter, it needs some help, so we gave some money for that. And the master plan for the town, we gave funds to update the master plan. And the big thing, the boiler for the town hall. I guess it's been a major issue here in the building, so we funded the boiler here in the town hall, and it's such an expensive project, we're gonna do it with two payments, this year and next year, but it will be paid. We got a tractor for the cemetery, Park Department, I think it's All Wheels Turn on It, is what I understand. We gave money for the dive team to get their equipment up to snuff. Each man has their own equipment, and some of it's very old, so we're gonna have the dive team have equipment that be part of the fire department equipment. We also funded the ambulance, that's a major expense, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars now for a fully-equipped ambulance. So we did that over two years. That's gonna be another two-year project, but we will have another new ambulance in town. The last one that, the one we're gonna get rid of, they're gonna get rid of, is ten years old, and we funded that also. For the police department, we are buying defibrillators for the cruisers. They get on a scene, they can go right to work and be all going before the ambulance gets there. We also funded the van for the senior center. They're gonna have a brand-new van for the senior center. The Beale's Library, we had funded them last year for their new addition and elevator, what's gonna go on there. This year, it's payment two of three, so it'll be next to three-hundred thousand dollars we will have given the library for the new handicapped accessible. The schools, we take care of them pretty well. And all of the technology, I understand, for the school system, we've paid over, through the years. As of last year, not this year, but last year, we funded a project so every high school student got an iPad. So, they don't, they can't keep it, belongs to the school system, but they have it to use during the year. So, we thought that was a very good project. We do have some histories of the foundation, Robinson-Broathurst story, that one of our trustees' wives wrote it, and we have one for each one of you. We gave one to the town manager already, when I got the appointment to come here. And we have a pamphlet also, that you can give to each one of you. Do you have any questions, anything we can help with?
Right now, I think we'd just like to say thank you. I've been around, I've been around a long time, I've watched you fund the schools and the town. Quite honestly, they could not have advanced the technology without you, so we've made great strides in the schools department. I know the town side is greatly appreciative of all the efforts you have put forward. Again, I don't think we could have done all we've done without you. I'm sure the people in town hall would mostly appreciate the heat in the winter, because the old boiler was acting up. But I'm just so thrilled that you guys spend the time to be in town, to work with different groups here, and spread the money around that you do. Every year, I'm amazed at the amount of money that you can find, in good times and bad. You guys have always come through at critical times for every department, I think, in town, so I just, I'd like to say thank you.
Remember, it's not my money or Skip's money.
No, but, but, but it's the foundation's money, but you're hands-on here, and you see, you're the face of it, and you also see the end result by seeing the kids get the gifts and the ambulance run through town and the heat work in the winter.
Right. The total this year to Winchandon was one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to all of the town and all the other organizations that we funded this year. I tried to get a million-two, but they wouldn't give me.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
If you would please, Mr. Fletcher, just for those who may be listening, what's the process if a group wants to apply to Robinson-Broathurst?
The applications are online, or if you need a paper of one, I have them, Skip has them, and they are due by the first of January every year. You have to get your application by the first of January. It gives us two or three months to study and research what we need to do. And our annual meeting is usually the third week of May. We meet and distribute all the money, one meeting, and then letters are usually sent out by the first of June. So, it's a long process. You apply January one, you don't know until June one if you were funded at all, but that's how it works.
Thank you.
It has worked well for us.
Sure.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna make a comment, I'm glad one of your, our new selectmen is a firefighter, too. I was only thirty-five years there.
Thank you very much.
It's good to have young people there, it's wonderful. And we'll get, we'll pass these out, and then we'll get out of here.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dollars apiece.
I won't keep mine, I was gonna pass them for you. You trust me to?
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Thank you.
I don't know, I think there's one there, but I don't know. Maybe there's two.
Thank you, Skip.
Thank you very much.
More readings, you guys, to do, don't you have enough?
Thank you very much.
No. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
I'm trying to get twenty-five dollars apiece from you. You didn't bring enough of them.
Who needs?
What?
Oh, I don't, you can, yeah.
You have to have one.
Thank you. Skip, you can give that one to them. That way I don't feel left out.
I just wanna pay twenty-five dollars off.
No, thank you, you could keep it for now. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. They told me you're doing a great job.
Well, we'll see.
Yes, he definitely is.
You've got a real job to do.
That's true.
The next announcement that I have is the Parks and Recreation Department has been putting on the concerts on, every Friday night. The next one is seven-twenty-four, which is Carrot Cane and the Disclaimers. This ensemble band of local fame brings a distinctive mix of soft ballads and incredible tales of classic rock standards. And the last one, the Cold Chocolate from Boston, Mass., returning from our 2014 lineup, is back with the original energetic impression and bluegrass mixed with rock and country. This has been a very nice program that's gone on all summer, and I hope some people got a chance to take it in, because it really was something to see at times. And now I'll open up the floor to Selectmen's comments.
No comment this time?
Actually, yes, I have a few comments at this time. First, I would like to thank the Parks and Recreation Committee for everything that they've done with our concerts on the Common, and again, those are in Gar Park, and it really is a great job. Next, I would like to mention that Operation Winchandon Cares is accepting donations. They will be at the American Legion on August first. Also, on August first, we're gonna have our chili cook-off from eleven to four. Bentley Field? I don't know why, is it Bentley Field?
Bentley Field, yes.
That's what I thought, somehow I just lost that. It goes from eleven to four, eight dollars for adults and only a dollar for kids. It'll be exciting, there'll be bands in Elsa, Ilsa? Elsa? Okay. The other thing is, I would like to kinda push so that we could get a town Facebook page or something, so that we can have reminders for people who want these reminders, you know, when we have something coming up, when there's something going on in town. We do have a lot of the events, and sometimes throughout the summer, at different times, we get busy and we forget.
Mr. Chairman, we do post it on the website, on the town calendar, the events.
But it's not the same as having it come in your newsfeed.
Not quite.
We could, if I could, we could, we could work on that.
That's it.
Okay. Nothing at this time?
Nothing, that's it.
Okay. So now I will open up the floor for public comment. If there's anything about tonight's, tonight's business on there that you'd like to talk about now, please feel free to step forward.
I'm Christina Ricard, I'm the new president of the Winchandon Teachers Association. The association wishes to have a positive, open relationship with the town of Winchandon and its boards. Such a relationship entails a spirit of collaboration, honest communication, and transparency of practices. While I cannot speak for the other employee organizations in town, I imagine they also wish to have such a relationship with the town. The leaders of these employee organizations, including myself, were notified late last week via a letter from the acting town manager, that a vote would be taking place tonight regarding a change in health insurance. The subject line of the letter, which read "Notice of Intent to Vote on Change to Group Health Insurance Plans," seemed to indicate that such changes had already been investigated and the vote was to put them in place. If that were the case, it was alarming, because the employee groups have the right to bargain these changes through the Insurance Advisory Committee. However, the text of the letter stated that the vote was "to engage in the process to change health insurance benefits under General Law, Chapter 32(b), Sections 21 to 23." This made it sound as though the vote was simply to begin the investigation of alternative health insurance plans. The second interpretation was not concerning, as we've expected such changes to be proposed and brought to the IAC after the issues that occurred last year around insurance, which caused the town such difficulties. However, the reference to those sections of mass general law was confusing, since the town has not previously adopted nor enacted those sections of the law. Saturday, we found the agenda for tonight's meeting posted online. On it, under "New Business," is the proposed adoption of General Law, Chapter 32(b), Sections 21 to 23. Adopting and enacting this would make changes to the way in which the town negotiates health insurance with its employees. But why does the board believe that such a change is needed? In the past, when circumstances necessitated changes to health insurance, the system and procedures that are currently in place have worked well, and the town's employee groups have worked cooperatively with the town to find solutions that were mutually agreeable. To make these changes in the process, without having even made a request to the town's employee groups to negotiate changes in the health insurance, seems unnecessary and could even be construed as the town taking an aggressive or adversarial stance on such negotiations. Such a stance would not contribute positively to the sense of collaboration and cooperation between the town and its employee groups that we hope to share. I appeal to the board to vote against adopting General Law, Chapter 32(b), Sections 21 to 23, and to proceed with the investigation of alternative health insurance plans in cooperation with the town's employee groups through the existing channels provided by the Insurance Advisory Committee. We wish to continue to work positively together for the mutual good of the town, its residents, and its employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can speak now, or we can wait until the, that matter comes up on the agenda, whatever the wish of the board is.
Do you wanna address this now, while it's fresh?
Yes, I think so. Does it now, while it's fresh?
What's that?
The issue now, while it's fresh?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So everybody knows, I have to recuse myself at this time? Okay?
Are we actually taking it up?
Yeah, we're gonna take it up right now.
So we need, we need a motion to take it out of order, don't we?
Yeah, okay. So can I get a motion to take this out of order, please?
Motion to take this out of order.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes abstained, and I recuse myself at this time.
Essentially, what this, what this is, is, and I don't have a copy of the letter that the speaker just.
Oh, it's right here. There you go.
Pardon me, please, Mr. Lynch, was there something in our packet? I know it was on the agenda, but was there any information in our packet?
No, just, just the vote that might be taken in the addendum. There was no document in your packet.
So where do we have information on this issue?
In, oh, in the town manager's report.
Okay, just as part of the, all right.
Right, under the section, under, on page one, under FY16, General Government Budget?
The second bullet.
The second bullet.
Okay, thank you.
Health insurance, certainly. And there isn't a lot that's included within this, but let me, if I could just explain what this is. And Ms. Ricard, I certainly appreciate her sense that the, the groups have worked well in the past, and hopefully that will continue in the future. Let me, there's a little, there is a little bit of confusion, though, about the Insurance Advisory Committee. The Insurance Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee really doesn't do what it's been described, or at least legally doesn't do what's been described here tonight. The Insurance Advisory Committee, under statute, is primarily to give a, an opinion or recommendation, recommendations are a bit strong, we give an opinion to the chief executive, being the manager, or the Board of Selectmen, or whoever the, wherever the executive authority actually lies, with regards to health insurance. What happened was, back in about 2012, after numerous years of trying to improve the way that municipalities manage their health insurance programs, the state legislature and the governor, with the support of a number of different organizations, including the unions of the Commonwealth, came to a, an agreement, and a piece of legislation was passed, which was basically entitled "The Municipal Health Insurance Reform Act," back in 2012, which put into statute Sections 21, I don't have it right here in front of me here, 21 to 23 of Chapter 32(b). Prior to this going into effect, essentially what had to happen, unless you adopted Section 19, which was a coalition bargaining, some coalition bargaining language that really wasn't that effective, and actually tied the hands of municipalities, what had to happen is you had to somehow get all of your collective bargaining groups on the same page with regards to health insurance. And so, what was happening is the communities across the Commonwealth were having trouble managing their health insurance and not finding the savings that they otherwise would find. The legislature, the governors, the state put this into law, and this has been used very successfully in dozens, if not over a hundred municipalities here in the Commonwealth, I don't know the most recent numbers. The results are very positive for municipalities in saving money, and that's the bottom line here, is to save money. But to do so in a way that is also reflective of the need to provide effective health insurance for the employees and retirees. What this statute allows to happen, and it just allows to happen, is the town to notify, once adopted, to notify the employees of the intent to begin just looking at health insurance, to do an analysis of their health insurance offerings, to see what savings could be realized if, for instance, the town were to move to the Group Insurance Commission, which is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts health insurance program, and a number of municipalities have chosen to do that. If you look on page twelve of the Department of Revenue Report and Recommendations, it includes that, this recommendation, that we look at the Group Insurance Commission and that we adopt this law. So, the first step would be doing that analysis, the first step would be adopting the law, second would be doing the analysis to determine what savings could be realized. There is a point in time for some notification to the Insurance Advisory Committee, but the primary meat of this change, or this adoption of this law, is that the town would negotiate with a public employees committee, made up of all of the unions in the town, in a weighted vote. So, for instance, in this particular case, I haven't looked at those numbers, but I'm assuming that most of the employees of the town, in terms of belonging to unions, belong to the teachers' union, so therefore they would have the highest weight of vote. The retirees would also get a vote on this public employees committee. The retiree would be chosen by the Retired Employees Association of the Commonwealth, they would pick someone from Winchandon to represent them. And a series of negotiations would take place with the, with the employees in that manner. The town does not have the ability to just move forward, the town has to negotiate. But it does put time limits. The process cannot be stretched out, it cannot be stalled. At the end of the day, the town would, after negotiations, would have the right to move forward, and the employees would have the right to refer this to a committee, or an arbitration panel that would evaluate based upon the proposals that would be bringing forward, to ensure that there was a proper level of mitigation to any changes that were taking place. Now, I've seen this take place in a number of communities. In some cases, they go to the Group Insurance Commission, but a mitigation fund is set up to mitigate any impact on a class of employees that may have some impact as a result of the increased copays and increased deductibles that are commonplace in the private sector. In many of those cases, that mitigation fund goes untouched and unused, it's only put there in the event that there's some type of large deductibles and copays that occur, but in many cases, that never occurs. It is possible that through negotiations, a look-alike, a GIC, Group Insurance Commission look-alike program can be created through, in this case, it would be through Blue Cross most likely, because Blue Cross is what we have. There's also programs that are, a health insurance program offered by the Massachusetts inter-local insurance association that could be looked at. But all of that would take place in the context of negotiations with firm timelines. The idea that we simply depend upon the continued cooperation of all is a very positive thing, but it's also basically putting our trust that that is necessarily going to occur versus sitting down and negotiating at the bargaining table to make these changes possible. There's no doubt about it, that the taxpayers of the town of Winchandon are facing some very difficult times ahead, with a good portion of their money going to paying off deficit borrowings that have occurred over the last couple of years as a result of decisions and actions that have happened over the last number of years, particularly in the area of health insurance. And in order to try to save as much money as the town can over the course of the future, in order to pay that deficit, ensure that there's still money available to give raises, there's still money available to provide services, and there's still money available to make investments in the town's infrastructure, we need to do everything we can to save money. That's what led to the Department of Revenue recommendation, and that's what led to my putting this on the agenda for consideration tonight, so we can get the clock moving. One of the aspects of this is that this isn't something that just can take, just can happen. It has to, for instance, if we make the decision to go to the Group Insurance Commission, we have to have that decision made by sometime in November, which doesn't give us a lot of time to make these, to have these negotiations and make these decisions. Happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Anderson, as, as acting, if I may, I have a question. There's an awful lot to what you just said, what Ms. Ricard said, and I have not read the GL, et cetera, et cetera, about this. I don't think tonight, speaking for myself, I'm not ready tonight to make a positive or, or yes, vote on this. What I would like to suggest is that we postpone, put this on the agenda for our next meeting. Now that we have some more information, the actual mass general law information, I think we can be better prepared to speak about this at our next meeting. That's my, my comments.
Do you have a comment?
Well, I guess, with the response to Ms. LeBree, is there any problem that you would see with postponing this discussion or this vote?
I haven't worked off the calendar, you know, it's, again, time is of the essence, if we're going to do this and make the savings for fiscal year, there's no savings, by the way, there's no savings, it's unlikely there'll be savings for fiscal year sixteen. The savings would be for fiscal year seventeen, so, but because of the timing, if the process gets bogged down at all after we take the vote, that will give us essentially, September, give us ninety days, basically, to get that. give us 90 days, basically, to get that work done, and that's tight. But we could, we could certainly, if the unions are as cooperative as they have indicated they are, and I know that people here have had more experience with the groups than I do, then certainly we can make that happen. If it's not, then the, you know, the Department of Revenue has indicated that they see this as saving the town, and I don't know whether this is in fact accurate, somewhere in the vicinity of $300,000. $300,000 would go a long way towards paying the debt, the deficit that the town has racked up and owes the state. So, but if we, if you wanted to delay that, I have no guarantees that we'll be able to make that happen, but it'll be for fiscal year 17. So.
Okay, could you just, I need a couple of things clarified. A yes vote would mean that you can move ahead and form your committees and investigate? Is that correct?
We could investigate and form the public employees committee, yes.
Okay. And a no vote means?
We cannot.
You may not.
Right. And it could be that as a result of the meeting of the committees that, you know, maybe we, maybe we all decide not to move forward with any change. Maybe we've determined that there isn't as much savings as the state seems to indicate that there, there are, but it's, but without the yes vote, we don't move forward with that.
Okay. The last thing I want to clarify, because you said, you know, when the town notifies of their intent and then you're going to negotiate with the public employees within time limits, are the towns just going to go move forward? So does that mean, is the negotiations? I mean, and does it matter?
It reached, no.
If the town's going to go forward and do what it wants anyways?
The employee, the, the negotiations very much matter because the, that's one of the things that the arbitration people are going to be looking at is to whether there were negotiations that took place. It's basically an out in the cases where the, an agreement is not able to be reached and the, the effect of which is that, you know, you can't, that's always been the problem in the past. You would talk about doing something, but in fact, it never happened and therefore the savings were always put off.
Mm-hmm.
So, but it's, so it's, it's, you know, sort of the ultimate that it can be sent on to basically, the town can move forward, but there's an arbitration that establishes what type of mitigation has to occur, and it all has to be very documented.
Okay. Absolutely.
With the, the current agreement with the unions, is there a date in there that the health insurance that they currently have, like runs through and that you renegotiate at a certain period of time? Is there a date in there? Is so?
Well, I, I'm not, and I will, I will plead some ignorance on this. I'm not aware of any agreement that exists other than all the different collective bargaining agreements. Perhaps there was something with, you know, I know that there was something about the insurance advisory committee, but if you look at the statute, if you look at chapter 32B with regards to insurance advisory committee, the purpose of the insurance advisory committee is not to negotiate. The purpose of the insurance advisory committee, one, does not represent, by statute, does not represent all of the groups. It only is, it's a set size. It does not have negotiation powers. It only has powers of advice. And it really, all bargaining rests with the individual labor contracts. So unless there's some agreement that Winchton has done, the question is whether that would stand up legally, this, you know, you have to go off and you have to bargain with each one of the collective bargaining groups individually.
I guess I'm just concerned, was there any time that there was like a promise to continue the insurance that they currently have when they agreed to, like, this was put into place?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. You know, I know that, you know, we had the, we had the self-insured plan here in the, in the town, and then we moved to, you know, a full premium plan. Clearly, the self-insured plan was not sustainable. It's what put the town several million dollars in the red in large part because there weren't premium increases during that period of time, as well as the way reinsurance was being handled. I don't know if, if there were discussions back when the town moved to a straight premium plan with the point of service and the HMO, how that was, how that all came to be. And I'm not sure we really have a way to determine all of that. This would put, this would basically put in place the same system that those 100-plus, if not more, people have, have, or communities have handled their health insurance. And by all accounts, it's been viewed as a great success across the Commonwealth, saving, again, hundreds of millions of dollars for municipalities, which then is able to be put towards employee raises, holding positions that would otherwise be eliminated, and making, making everything more sustainable. If I could, one other, just to throw another sort of issue out there that the town has to be, because, and I talked to every town about this, every town has to be aware of, and I don't know, actually, Dawn, did you know what our Gatsby liability is? Okay. One of the ticking time bombs of every municipality and every state in this country is the unfunded liability for health insurance for retirees. And I will tell you, the numbers are staggering. And sooner or later, that bill comes due. And the problem, just like pensions over through the years, is communities kick this can down the road. And it may not be an issue right now for the town of Winchton, but an interesting analysis to do is to look at how much retiree health insurance was as a percentage of your health insurance budget 10 or 15 years ago, and look at what the percentage is today. Very quickly, communities are realizing that their money that they spend on health insurance for their retirees is greater than the amount of health insurance that they pay for their active employees. And that's just going to continue to grow and grow and grow and take over an increasing share of the town budget. So, again, the way you bring that under control is you do something with your health insurance program. I don't know if the town has adopted the section of 32B that requires that all retirees go into the Medicare system if they become, once they become eligible. Again, that would be required under this statute if we went to the GIC, but again, this is, these, health insurance is a huge issue out there for municipalities, and it's sort of low-hanging fruit to see where we can save money. And, you know, if, if the town chooses not to do it, that's certainly fine, but it's, ultimately, the town will pay for it in the long run.
Ms. Ricard?
Okay, a couple of points that I would just like to respond to. The IAC in town does have representation from all the employee groups, including the retirees. And the insurance coverage in town is the same for all employees. It's not negotiated separately by each group. We cannot negotiate it separately.
That's correct.
As far as the law goes, the vote tonight, according to the agenda, is to adopt the law. Once you adopt it, then you enact it separately. Once you enact it, it's a 30-day time period for, for the whole deal to be done. At this point, it's summer and a lot of people are out of town, so if you did that, it would be very difficult to get that done in 30 days. But, and also, we do need to provide the Medicare. But what it boils down to is the trust. There's nothing in the current system that prevents you from doing any of the investigation of cost savings measures and looking into all of that and proposing to make a change. There's nothing in the current system that does that. We want to work together to make it work. We all know that the town had difficulties. We all know that many of our associations agreed not to negotiate contract raises last year to try to help the town out. So I think we have that history of cooperation and collaboration that speaks to the fact that we will be cooperative in trying to make this happen.
Mr. Lynch, could you clarify for me? She said that what we would vote on tonight is to adopt the law and then it had, it will be enacted within 30 days. Is that correct?
I'm actually looking up the, the timing on that right now. The, I know that it doesn't have to take place, there's, it doesn't, there isn't, it is a point at which the negotiations have to occur. It doesn't, it's from a point of notification, though. It's not as if today we do it and then 30 days from now it has to be done. It's a point of notification. And I will try to find that right here. I will say that, again, this has been done in numerous communities. I myself have experience doing this. It goes back a ways, but it's, we were very successful in negotiating a change. Now, in that case, we actually began negotiations outside of that, I will say, and then we were able to achieve, but time wasn't quite as of the essence as it is here. If I may, if I, if I could, just read?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. From Town Council. "The first step in the process for the board of selectmen to vote to engage in the plan design process. At least two calendar days in advance of said vote, the town must send a notice to the representative of each collective bargaining unit to which the town provides health insurance benefits and to a representative of the Retired State, County, Municipal Employee Association. Following a majority vote under this section, the regulations require that the town evaluate its health insurance coverage and determine the savings that may be realized after the first 12 months of implementation of cost-sharing plan design changes or upon transfer to the group insurance commission. The town must then notify the insurance advisory committee of its estimated savings in a notice referred to as a 52.03 notice. If the town has not established an IAC under 32B Section 3, the town must notify the president of each union affected and shall designate and notify a retiree of the governmental unit as a member of the committee. The notice to the IAC must contain a detailed analysis and comparison between the town's current health insurance plans and the new plans being proposed and a mitigation proposal, among other required information described in the regulations." Within two business days after meeting with the IAC, the town must provide written notice to the president of each collective bargaining unit and to the retired employees group, and, one, that the town has elected to make changes, two, that the number of employees eligible in each bargaining unit, and three, assuming no existing public employee committee is in place, request for designation of each union and retired employees representative to the public employees group. Each union and the retired employees must supply this information within five business If you fail your, so thereafter, the town must send the, the notice to each public employee committee representative. This commences the 30-day negotiation period. So just going through everything that we just talked about would take us probably until September. That begins the 30-day negotiation periods. The parties then have 30 days to reach an agreement. To be effective, the agreement must be signed. Now, there's nothing to say that after that 30-day negotiation period, that, that couldn't be extended out, but then it has to, if, after that 30 days, which we're now into October, you'd have to go through the process then of notify, having that extra time in there and then being able to notify. If we went to the group insurance commission, which is recommended by the DOR, then we'd be looking at notifying them sometime in November for the December 1st cutoff to affect us for fiscal year 17. So it's not 30 days from today. From today, we would simply undertake the, looking at the different options and analyzing what we could save if we were to move forward. That would take a good two or three weeks in and of itself. Then we would have to sit down with the insurance advisory committee. Then we would notify the insurance advisory committee of the information. Then we would start the 30-day. So again, you're into the October timeframe, extending out with mutual agreement would then allow us then to, if need be, go to the group insurance commission by the December 1st cutoff.
Ms. Bunnell?
I don't really need to, I'll probably just do things. May I just ask, were you just reading from section 19, sir?
No, I was not.
Which one number were you reading from?
I was reading the, the process under section, chapter 32B, sections 21 to 23, not the coalition bargaining under section 19.
Is it a red?
I was reading in the, I was reading a, a piece of correspondence.
Okay. Totally different than what you see would have as law, as written law. My wish?
They would have, if we provided the law, that would be different than a piece of correspondence.
Okay.
That would be the law.
The law is, what you basically reading from was section 19?
No, I was reading from sections 21 to 23.
A different town, okay, I apologize on that. And secondly, all?
Excuse me, I didn't hear that. What was that? That was a different town?
Yes. Well, didn't you say that was from a town of, no, it's from our town council.
Town council. That's our town attorney.
That was mine, thank you. The second thing I'd like to clarify for you is that we are, we do have to go under Medicare. We do have to go file for Medicare as a retiree.
Okay, that's great.
The process is definitely in place.
Good.
It has been, and every member, as Mr. Kye said, every member of the bargaining group in this town get represented at the insurance committee.
Right.
As well as some people who don't necessarily buy it and they're on like a different type of contract.
Sure.
They're all allowed to sit in as well.
Great.
So that's been something I've tried to hustle for all three of you to be consistent. So I would love, I'd love to see as well that you put this on both members of this board, do it.
Mr. Zipkowski?
Yeah, my name's Bob Zipkowski, and I'm not covered under the town insurance, so I have no special interest here, except I'm a taxpayer. I've got a couple of questions, though, I'd like to ask the, you know, the board. One is, does anyone know what sections of 32B the town has accepted? You know, have we accepted 19? I mean, are there any sections? What sections have we accepted? Do we know that? Secondly, doesn't the town right now have a look-alike GIC policy? I believe the, the last town manager put this in, it was supposed to be a look-alike of GIC, and now you're talking about we could have a look-alike of GIC, and I think we already have that. The third thing is, we're looking to save money, and I'm a taxpayer and I want to save money as well. However, there's also a human cost. We know, especially as you get older, that insurance is critical, absolutely critical for people. And we also have to remember that many of the people that work for us, the town employees that may be asked to maybe have lesser policies, maybe less benefits, more copays and so forth, they also live in town and pay taxes. So to me, they're almost like paying, you know, paying twice. They get hit and twice on that. Thirdly, or the fourth, if anyone on the board has not read section 21 and 23, I don't see how you can vote on it. You know, we can tell you what it means, but you know what? Once we get this going, once you start that train, it's difficult to stop. So once we get on that fast track, try to stop the train, and it's really difficult. I'm surprised that, that it wasn't in your packet to, so you could at least read it and see what you're voting on. To vote on it on something that you haven't read is irresponsible. So we, I think we need to put this on hold at least till next week, give you a chance to, to read it. It's probably in terrible legalese. You'll, you'll probably hate me for having to say to read it, but it's worth doing. And we can start the process, as the town, you know, the actual town manager says, outside of this. So we can start looking for, for, for other alternatives, you know, outside of accepting this law, because once you accept the law, I think it's going to be difficult to unaccept it. My, my view.
If I may, I, I will take responsibility that you don't have a copy of the law in your packet. And again, if, if the, if the board would so, wishes to, you know, put this off till its next meeting in August, that's, we'll just work with that, and if we aren't able to make this deadline, then we'll push it off till the following year. aren't able to make this deadline, then we'll push it off till the, the following year. Uh, you know, I will say that the, with regards to the human cost, uh, I belong to the GIC. Uh, I, I put this in place, uh, in the city of Lowell. The city of Lowell, at this point, has saved, uh, probably in ex, probably close to twenty million dollars, uh, over this period of time. The employees are, uh, very happy members now of the GIC, and, um, uh, they have all received, uh, added compensation, uh, since that time as well, so. But I, we can certainly put this off till August and we'll just try to work around that.
Yep, Madam Chair, I mean, my intent, uh, I, I want to read the law, um, and I'm not saying that two weeks from now, after done, done my due, having done my due diligence, I would not vote a positive on this, I just want time to, uh, to, to get the facts more. That, that was my intent of recommending that we postpone it till our next meeting.
I think I have to agree.
Yeah.
Should we have a move to postpone?
Okay. I move to, uh, Ms. Decker, correct my language if I'm wrong, um, to, uh, postpone any action on this topic and put it on our, the agenda for our next meeting, which I believe is August tenth? August, for the August tenth agenda to be, uh, discussed at that time and voted on.
It's a motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak under public comment at this time before we start our regular meeting?
I'd like to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We have up and coming a poll petition, public hearing on Oak Street.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to open the public hearing on the, um, poll petition, um, regarding Oak Street by National Grid.
Can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let's see, what's aye also, thank you. Okay, we have an entertainment permit for the second fall festival at Ingleside.
Mr. Chair, we just opened, we have to do this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
I forget that.
I'll go ahead and, I'll read it. Yes, Mr. Chair, okay.
Yeah, you can read that again.
Um, all right, July eighth, twenty fifteen, in conformity with the requirements of Section twenty-two of Chapter one sixty-six of the general laws, T E R period E D, I've got to look it up and see what that means. You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen of the town of Winchandon, Massachusetts, on the twentieth day of July at six thirty-five P. M. in Winchandon Town Hall, second floor auditorium, one oh-nine Front Street, upon the petition of National Grid for permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Oak Street. National Grid to install one sing- single-owned, I believe, S. O., single, singularly-owned pole, beginning at a point approximately twenty-five feet south of the center line of the intersection of Spruce Street. National Grid to install a stub pole to remove a tree guy, location approximately as shown on plan attached. Also be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Oak Street, Winchandon, Massachusetts, number one-five-six-nine-zero-three-two-eight, June fourth, twenty fifteen. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways, for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing, distributing purposes. Your petitioners agreed to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said pole for the fire, police, telephone and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Signed, uh, Margaret G., Margaret G., uh, for the Winchandon Board of Selectmen. A buddy is notified and the list is attached.
Are there any buddies here to go over this? Please, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Erica Rao. I live at twenty-two Oak Street. Twenty-two Oak Street, um, is obviously right behind us. The location in which they're planning on putting this pole, let me go back, in, in two thousand nine, I purchased the house at twenty-two Oak Street. In two, um, I cut down a lot of trees, tried to revive the area a little bit. There was a very large tree that is, um, twelve feet in circumference, so it is well over a hundred years old. There was a guide wire hooked into this tree, and I wanted to have the tree taken down. So, I had it pruned, and then the arborist said, "We can't do anything more till that guide wire's gone." So, in two thousand thirteen, I began calling National Grid. It went on for a year. They did not respond. Then finally, I had to start sending pictures back and forth, back and forth, about getting this guide wire out of the tree. So, they finally came and removed the guide wire out of the tree in two thousand and fourteen. They were very upset about it. So, I had made arrangements to have the tree removed, called one arborist, had a date set, then I was, it's a huge, enormous tree, it's enormous. So, I said, "Well, I'm going to call a couple more arborists and find out what the, what they feel about it." So, I got one from Sterling, one from Bolton. They said, "Don't cut it down. It's very much alive, it is, there's very few trees that are left this big in Winchandon." So, when National Grid came and cut the wire out, obviously, they weren't happy about it, they came back about ten days later and they put a pole, a marker in the street. And I said, "What's that?" They said, "We're putting a pole in right there." And I said, "You are?" He said, "Yeah, we're going, we're going to put a pole in right there." I said, "Well, no one told me when they cut the guide wire that a pole was going in." So, if you are on Oak Street and you ride by the, as I've learned today from the man from National Grid, he said that you have a ten-foot easement? Is that, is that correct, on the street? So, on Oak Street, you, you basically own ten feet of the property?
The town does, right.
The town does?
Right.
Okay. So, where they want to put this pole in is they want to drill down at least six feet into the base of this tree, into the root system. There is a nine-and-a-half foot span between the base of the tree and a stone wall, which is then the street. I feel, after going through all this, trying to preserve this tree now, that why do we have to drill into the root? When I spoke to them about, is there another option, that maybe we could go a little to the left? Nope, it's the only option. My concern is that the stone wall is going to be destroyed and that eventually the tree will die.
Can I ask you one question?
You sure can.
Would you be applicable to putting the guide wire back up?
Well, I asked that, thank you. I asked that question. No, we don't do that. We're trying to get our guide wires out of trees. The hook is still in the tree. All they'd have to do is reconnect the wire. But he said, "No, we're trying to get guide wires out of the tree, this is, this is it." I don't, after going through all this and what we've done to try to take care of this property and this tree, I really don't want to go back and now chew up the roots.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is there anyone from National Grid here to speak to this petition?
Shall I move?
No, you're welcome to stay.
Okay.
If you'd please introduce yourself, I, I'm, what I'd like to know is the reasoning behind putting this pole in.
I, I didn't get that while I was sitting down. What was that?
Um, if you would please introduce yourself?
Oh, Ken Dobie, National Grid.
Okay, and what's the purpose of putting this pole in?
At the request of the customer, we remove the guy wire.
Right.
And now we're caught, both of us are caught between a rock and a hard place. Uh, it, we don't attach guy wires to non-permanent structures anymore, in this case, trees. That was done almost a hundred years ago, that's no longer done anymore. When I say a hundred years ago, that's practice.
You understand, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, we just don't do that anymore. It's like trying to reverse the clock, you can't do that anymore.
No, I understand. So, that guy wire, where did it run to? Now, a guy wire, it's hooked into the tree and it goes and it holds, helps hold something up, correct?
Yes, what, what it is, you've got a pole line going down Spruce Street.
Okay.
It's just electric only, not the phone line, the phone company doesn't need it, because as a rule, they set the poles in Winchandon, in this case, they don't need it because their lines don't go down Spruce Street. If they did, they'd need to have a guy wire on this as well. And, uh, basically, it's pulling the pole line down that street and you need...
Away from Oak Street?
Yes, and you need the support back here.
The tension, okay.
It's like dominoes, and, uh...
So, the sole purpose of this pole is to anchor the line going down Spruce Street? Okay. You've looked at, as, Ms. Rowe?
Yeah.
Um, one, one way or the other, why does it have to go right here?
Just keep it in line with the, the line and the pole going down the street.
Is there...
Also, with the, the, the house next door, eventually, it's already tight right now, but it's getting tighter, uh, because the pole's getting, it will pull a service off the house next door, number eighteen.
So, and, and I guess, in this case, we have a hundred, a hundred-year-old tree, which is very rare.
Yep.
And you have a guide wire in there, whether you...
Then cut.
Yeah, but it can be...
But the hook is still in there, correct?
The hook is still there. I mean, can we find a happy medium? Can we do this?
I'm sorry to say, unfortunately, not, because it's not considered a permanent structure, it's, it's, it's like, uh, for an analogy, saying, let's, uh, my car runs on leaded gas, I need leaded gas, you can't get it anymore.
Well, if you kill the tree, are you going to pay for it? Because that's what you're going to do by drilling into the roots. If you kill the tree, are you going to pay for it and replace it?
I don't know, because the roots that, on that diameter, diameter of the tree are in town property. If that was the, if that was the road or sidewalk area, you'd be facing the same thing. It would be tearing up the street or the sidewalk in this case.
Is there any way to guy it from, across, across Oak Street? Do you have to cross Oak Street in order to guy it?
Yes, and I don't want to put the, we can't put the pole in the street. It's got to be, that would be a sidewalk area, if, if there was a sidewalk there, and that's the whole idea. As far as the, uh, the low retaining wall, I was going to have the pole put in about two feet in from the wall, so the, the wall wouldn't be...
So, the wall would not be affected at all?
No, no.
And would you be responsible?
Even though, even though that is, by technicality, that is a town wall, so...
I'm sorry, did, when did you?
If the wall was damaged, would they be responsible to repair that? I had an incident a couple of years ago where Snowplow took out the original hitching post that was built into that wall, so...
I, I, I don't know where liability would fall. I would assume that whoever's doing the work would have coverage for any, any damage done, but I...
And there, there's no way...
I don't know.
To take that pole to the left?
No, it's, it throws it out of line.
Can you, where, where is this tree in regards to your property?
Right in the front yard.
Right in front yard.
There were two, when I, I don't, are you from Winchandon?
Yes.
You know where Dr. Antonellis was?
Yes, yeah.
That, it's that house.
Oh, okay.
There was a big stump when I bought the house. We ground that out, but the tree next, the big tree that's closer to the street, that had some dead limbs, so we groomed that, cleaned up all the other things, but that tree has a little bit of a cavity. So, that was my concern, that, oh geez, maybe we should cut this down.
Yeah, it's starting to die.
So, when I contacted the arborists, one said, "Sure, I'll cut it down for you." Then the other two that came from a distance away said, "You'd be crazy to cut that tree down, that, it's really alive." And the man who came to see me about this notification, he said, "I hope you'll go," he said, "because it would really be a shame to destroy that tree." So, I don't, I don't know, is there a happy medium?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I, I'm grasping at straws here. If you put the pole beyond the tree, would it be in your front yard?
Yes.
I don't, would, imagine would not be acceptable to you. Okay.
I don't want to kill the tree.
I understand, yeah.
And I believe if you start cranking out and drilling, what is it, a two-foot diameter hole you drill?
Yeah, I've seen it done, yeah.
Two-foot diameter hole, I mean, six feet down, that's a pretty substantial chunk of root system, you know?
Oh, yeah.
It might be okay for a year, but in two or three years, are you going to shock it, and it's just not going to thrive anymore?
Okay, thank you. My concern, um, everybody knows me, you know, nature, gardening, the earth, um, the tree takes priority. However, my concern is if we do not allow this work to be done and that line of poles pulls down, pulls out from someone's house, causes damage, da-da-da, weaves the board or the town liable because we did not allow that preventative work to be done.
I don't have the answer to that question, but I, I will say, speaking for myself, I'd like to see another plan worked out.
Yep.
I really would. I, I am adamantly opposed to cutting a hundred-year-old tree down. I tell you flat out, I'm not, I'm not going to vote in favor of it. I think you should see if you can find a happy compromise. Being the big, not you personally, being the big bully on the block, got to work with people, sorry. I'm not, it's not your job, and I understand that, and I'm not beating you up. I, I'm, National Grid, National, no, no, I, I, you're, you're the guy they're going to throw up here that's going to get lambasted, okay? Sorry, it happens everywhere you go, so you, you're used to it. I'm just saying, from my perspective, there should be a way you could work out something that's a compromise. Because I'm sure if she went to some tree association, you'll never get the tree cut down, they'll mark it. So, I am not in favor of this until another, uh, all, all alternatives have been wasted. And I ask you to go back and, from my perspective, I speak for myself, to go back and find a, a compromise or an alternative solution. And I'll leave it up to the rest of you, but now you know all, how I feel. I'll open it up to rest.
I absolutely feel you keep the tree.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I drove by it today, circled around it.
On the bike?
On my bike. Keep the tree.
So, the question becomes is, do we ask them, do we postpone this to see if they can find a viable option or we just kill it? I'll leave it to you guys, what do you think? Want them to try to find a viable solution and come back?
Absolutely.
Make that motion, please.
I make a motion for National Grid to find another solution other than cutting down that tree or ruining that stone wall, um, that there's got to be a better way, they've got engineers, if they can figure something out, that'd be great.
Ms. Anderson, if I may, um, they're not talking about cutting down the tree, they're talking about drilling, so...
No, drilling, anyway, same thing.
Well, killing.
Going to have to.
Killing the tree, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Can I get a second on that?
Seconded.
Any more discussion on it? Yeah, well, I'm waiting.
Sorry, I forgot your name. Dobie?
Ken.
Ken?
Yeah.
So, if we take this vote and we say, "We want you to find another solution..."
I, I just have to cut you off right there, there isn't any other, it's, you might as well just vote it down if that's the case, I've got to be honest. And, uh, we let the chits fall if anything happens with the line, and I'm, it's one of those things.
So, i- in this case, is this motion kind of pointless, do you think? I mean, if, if there's no other solution, if we're getting it from...
We're listening to one man who does not have gone back to his company and talked to somebody else. I'm willing to, I'm willing to give them the opportunity to try to work this out versus outright killing it. I'm trying to give them the opport...
Not, you say kill it, we're not talking about the tree here, right?
No, not the tree, this, this, this permit to do this.
Right.
To, to not allow this permit to go forward. I, I think the fair thing to do is to try to find an admirable solution. If they can't come back with one, then we come back and vote and say, "No, we're not going to allow you to do that." But I think, I'm trying, I'm trying to find a happy medium here.
Right.
For both parties, and, and I, and I don't know if you can give me the answer, but I'm sure someone could. So, that's where I was going. So that's where I was going with it. I'm not, I'm not saying that you have the, the end all, be it all answer.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Miller has his hand up.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, um, I just wanna point out, from a basic physics standpoint, there is a solution, two poles equidistant from the one pole. May not be a very good one, I don't know the layout, basic physics says, there are other solutions like that.
It's the same amount of tension.
Light two poles in your yard versus one? But physics says there may be other solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. So, the motion is to have the two parties go back and see if they can find a viable, I'm boiling it down, a viable solution.
One last comment, if I may. I would be willing to help work with you to see if there's any resources or anything else that myself or anyone could possibly come up with, perhaps another diagram or something, to see if in fact, whether or not there is something else.
Are we ready to vote? Yes?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 And it is for you guys to try to work out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We should've asked for air conditioning, that's what we should've asked for.
We get them back.
Can I get a two minute recess while she's talking? Can I get a two minute recess?
Sure.
Motion to two minute recess.
Second.
Are you done? Let's go for a two minute recess. All set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now we'll go to the Fall Festival at Ingleside, September twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, the Winchandon Enhancement Committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We have to close the hearing first.
Oh, yes.
I make the motion to close the public poll petition hearing.
So moved.
Uh, second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and the chair votes aye also. Thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, I gotta get those things down. Now we're gonna go. Third time's the charm.
Good evening. We're applying again this year, second year, for a permit to hold the annual Fall Festival, Winchandon Fall Festival at Ingleside. Uh, we will be hosting it through the Winchandon Enhancement Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Toy Town Partnership. Last year, we had over two thousand people attend, it was very, very successful. We hope to get even more.
Gotta pull the mic close to you, Dave.
Okay, I'm not gonna repeat, cause I don't remember what I said. But last year, we had over two thousand people, this year, we expect to have even more. Uh, same agenda, basically, bands, games, food, vendors, fun, challenges, kids' events, as well as some older kids' events this year, too.
I'm wondering if you could shed some light on the Ingleside Project. Last time, we heard that there might be a vote by the Winchandon School, if we did some sidewalk work. Has anything come about that you might enlighten us on?
Mr. Chair, does that have anything to do with this?
It just, it, it doesn't, but I'm trying to get some history, because they're raising, trying to raise money for this project, and I'm wondering where this project might stand.
Excuse me, actually, we're not raising money for the project, we're raising visibility and town participation. The Winchandon Enhancement Committee was formed a couple of years ago after the Robinson Broadhurst held a community forum and brought a lot of different people together to explore what's working in Winchandon, what needs to be done to make things better. They put a steering committee together as a result of that forum, and the purpose of that steering committee was to begin to engage in projects for building community. And so the Winchandon Enhancement Committee, that is, that is our purpose. So I guess, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a fundraiser, people come for free, it's not like, okay, just, just to-
And I'd like to ask Mr. Lynch to bring us all up to date on where we stand on this.
Sure, let me, let me do my, my best, being so knowledgeable about the project. I met last week with the, with the committee, and there's some, some great work that's been done on this, and we're continuing to explore the relationships with the Winchandon School to see about working out some type of transfer. So we're working on a number of different initiatives to keep those dialogue, that dialogue going. At this point, I'd be hesitant to say too, too much beyond that, except that there's some shared interest that we have with, with, with the Winchandon School with regard to some intersections that obviously serve them, but from my perspective, more importantly, serve the town in terms of safety, that we may be able to work together on. Likewise, there's some pedestrian safety issues across some public roads that we are going to be doing some crosswalk work with the Winchandon School in cooperation with the Winchandon School over the course of the next thirty days. And they, of course, have an interest in transferring that property in some way, and we'd like, obviously, to have that transferred over to the town of Winchandon. So, all of those discussions and those dialogues are moving forward. But to get us further down the road, we're working cooperatively on those crosswalks, we're working cooperatively on designing some intersection improvements, and then we're looking for some outside funding to make those intersection improvements take place. And hopefully, at the end of all of that, we can, we can work out some arrangement with regards to the property.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you. I know this is a very valuable project for people in town, and I'm just trying to get an update, so I heard a little bit about it. Sorry about that, I digress. Okay, so we have all the appropriate sign offs here. Uh, the only thing that I thought was anything was something about ice cream melting, but uh-
Okay, it's summer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, shouldn't be an issue. Uh, it is a nonprofit, so it is checked off. So can I get a motion to approve this as presented, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, thank you.
Thank you very much, hope to see you all on September twenty-six, eleven to three.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to Acting Town Manager Lynch and his staff, thank you very much for reducing the amount of paperwork on the application.
You're welcome. Pleasure. Leaving a tree.
Okay, we have a solicitation permit for a door-to-door salesman, for a Lorenzo Leonard. He did work for Solar Energy, now he's working for Vivitar Solar?
Vivint.
Vivint, sorry.
Yep.
Good. Uh, he has been permitted previously to represent Solar City, now he wants to Vivint Solar. He has paid the appropriate fee, there has been a quarry check done, and there's nothing that I see that would stop him from, changed companies, did we?
Yeah, I was, my hands were tied with the other place, we're just taking too long for installs, I, Vivint just come to find out it's a quicker install process and help people go solar a lot quicker than I was at Solar City. So financially, it was a better choice.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, I apologize.
You guys, you gotta speak clearly into it.
If you hear your voice echoing back to you, that's good.
Yeah, I was saying, I switched companies just because the installs were a lot quicker with Vivint, and with Solar City, it was just a long progress, taking four to five months, and a lot of people weren't too happy, so. And they had more potential growing with this company than they actually did with the other ones, so. So I was just taking a hit, not getting any younger, so I wanna progress up higher and quicker.
I understand completely. Uh, everyone have any questions? Uh, motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a question, cause you didn't look my way.
You can open for discussion and continue.
Oh, can I open for discussion?
Absolutely.
Um, I just wanted to know, what was the time period? How long is this for? Do you intend to be going door-to-door?
As long as you guys allow me and permit me.
Monday through Saturday, twelve to eight P.M.
Oh, you're talking about the time, yeah, twelve to eight.
Wait, until the snow falls?
What's the time period, how many months?
Well, usually in the winter, I still go out there, I work in the winter, and as long as you guys permit me to work, I'll work, as long as you guys allow me to have my permit in the town.
Yeah, that, that was my question, I mean, is this unlimited?
No, I think they have to come back year to year, every year to renew it.
Oh, to yearly?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I just questioned eight o'clock at night, that, that to me seems kind of late, to be knocking on doors.
Well, I mean, honestly, I, I put up usually by seven, I'm usually done, just cause, same reason, I like to get home early, and I don't wanna be out too late either, but.
Okay.
Usually in the winter times, I probably wouldn't be out as late either.
You can move to limited if you'd like to, the timeframe, if you wanna back it down.
Could we till like seven, or, I, I like dark. Is that really old of me? I, you know, when it gets dark, I don't like to answer my door.
Yeah, so I, usually like-
Unless I know who's on the other side.
Yeah, usually, like I said, I don't stay out till eight all the time, but I know the sun stays out till like nine during the summer. In the winter times, I usually cut it a lot shorter, just cause, same reason, I don't feel comfortable knocking doors when it's dark out.
Especially if you got little kids at home and you get nervous, and, yeah. You live out and there's no neighbors anywhere nearby.
Dark in the winter is three forty-five.
I know. And I'm in bed by four thirty.
So, um, I don't know, you wanna-
But I, I wouldn't have a problem, it says twelve, you know, going earl, maybe a little bit earlier and-
So would you like to make a motion to change it from to eleven to seven?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to change the, the time, Monday through Saturday, from eleven to seven P.M.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor on this?
We have to, we had a previous motion, cause I think, I think that should be an amendment to that motion, we'll vote on that, go back to the other motion.
And I guess I would ask the applicant, do you have a problem with us changing the time?
No, no, it's fine.
Okay.
I, I just have a question, though, like, with the field that I'm in, eventually, you end up getting a lot of referrals, so sometimes, I don't even know, I just get a lot of referrals and I'll be out till like eight, but there will already be preset appointments, that won't be no problem, right?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, it's just knocking on the door.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Mrs. Zbickowski.
I just a comment, uh, in the past, we saw the, the storage, you know, people just, they're doing, doing solicitation, and we, we get a lot on the phone we don't need. I don't know what solicitation, what he's talking about, he's leaving off some literature or something, but a salesman, sometimes it's very difficult to say no to, for the first ten, ten times, I mean, you know? So, I would think strongly about, you know, what solicitation really is, is what it, do, is, it's really a lot for the citizens, but I think if people want solar, there are ways of putting in the newsmaker, or, you know, to have people call them. But to have people come to your house, uh, what should I, you should think about that, but?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, mister?
If I could respond to Mrs. Zbickowski, this, also, there's a permit, I believe it's a permit, or license given by the state, so I'd also kind of make that complaint to the state as well. I think this is done in most, if not all municipalities, so I guess we're just one of them as well, so. Ultimately, if, if you don't want the person at your door, if you don't want anyone at your house, and you have a problem with them, you can always call the police, or just say, please leave and don't come back.
A sign that says no solicitation.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, let me come back to the first motion. And you wanna, we wanna amend the motion.
Right.
To, okay, so you wanna offer an amendment to the motion that says eleven to seven? I got it right now? Okay.
Okay, so I wanna amend the motion to change the Monday through Saturday, eleven A.M. to seven P.M.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now, that's done. Can I get a motion to approve his?
Main motion.
The amended motion.
The amended motion.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so now we have the second one. Which is this? Nathan?
Well, he just let me, but he had a family emergency, so he had a-
Okay.
Uh, same situation? Okay.
Okay, so can I get a motion to amend it before we get going?
No, we don't, we don't need a motion to amend it.
I move to approve the license for Nate Girmay, with the hours changed from, changed to eleven A.M. to seven P.M.
Can I get a second on that?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, you're squared away. Okay. So now we have the town fiscal, fiscal report. We're running a vote an hour late.
Additional reports, the town account, put together.
Oh, thank you. So, does this negate the one that was in our packet?
It's in addition to?
In addition to, all right. I think what you may have in your packet is F Y sixteen, which I wasn't going to discuss, I thought we were discussing F Y fifteen. Okay. All right, I see. Really haven't had much activity in sixteen yet, so I figured, August tenth, you can ask me about sixteen if you want. Well, actually, I have a couple of questions on the sixteen. I don't have it with me, though. Okay.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, we're carrying forward, or we can carry forward, sixty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty cents in fifteen?
We currently have voted these articles, so they are, and we don't have any special bylaw to retire our articles, unless they specifically say that they're for the fiscal year operating budget, unless they identify a time period. So currently, at the end of fiscal year fifteen, yes, there are sixty-six thousand eight ninety-eight thirty there to carry forward in articles.
So we can pay off our snow and ice deficit of nineteen thousand and whatever, whatever else is left that might be floating?
No, we're not talking about that.
Well, I think, if I may, unless, when I haven't had a chance to talk to Donna today about, but if we have sixty-six thousand dollars in the articles, unless those, if those articles are no longer needed, you can close those out and transfer them into the F Y sixteen.
These are all needed articles.
These are all needed articles.
These are all current, um, project oriented articles. So this money is already earmarked for something?
So far, okay, that's, that's what I was trying to go to, okay.
I, I had the same thought as you.
What we do have is approximately seven thousand in articles that could be closed out. And go to free cash? Yes. And free, or use, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So maybe seven thousand. Those were specific for certain years, and those can be closed out.
So if they, if these, if these are, if these projects don't get closed out, then that money will be put on a town meeting to move it around again, right?
Yeah, but fifty-five thousand of it alone is for the fire department roof, so that's the biggest chunk of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine, I don't, I get a chance to look at this, and just, that caught my eye.
And then we have some encumbrances of about seventy-eight hundred that have already been requested from departments to encumber the funds from this year to next year, which puts us at a balance of eight thousand roughly, is what we'll be closing at. In the black? Pardon me? In the black, or in the red? Yes. In the black. Yes, amazingly so.
Okay. Again, we can keep chipping away at that snow and ice, that's where I'm going. Thank you. I'm looking at this, I'm looking at this year's, um-
Yeah, she doesn't have it.
This year's thing, and if I'm going down to, uh, let's see, third line down? Are we encumbering that money already? The four fifty-five, eight seventeen?
He's on the, the one fund that was in our packet, the twenty sixteen.
I'm on the sixteen now.
I don't have the sixteen with me. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, I saw it, I had it, I want to ask it out. Well, just let me have a copy of it, then maybe I can-
The sped transportation one?
Yes. I'm looking at the, it's, it says eighty-two point eight percent, and it says encumbered request at four fifty-five, eight seventeen. Is that, is that money already encumbered as of, like, today, is where I'm going?
I think we'd have to ask the school department, they encumber that.
Mr. Parquet? You'd be so kind.
I do not have that report, what account is it, what we're talking about? Yeah, so we've got our, that's our transportation contract for-
Right, I just didn't know if you, it looks like you've encumbered four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars already.
Correct.
Okay, that's where I was going, cause it's like- Okay, that's where I was going, because it's like eighty-two percent of the budget and I'm in the.
Sure, it's because we know it's a sta- set contract for in district, and I'm, obviously if anything changes, that would change, but we know what we have right now, so.
Okay, that was my main question, because I look at it and go, we're twenty days in and.
I don't, I don't believe we have the contract yet.
Yes, I know, that's being worked on.
It's being worked on?
Yes.
So we've encumbered without the contract?
Because we know the amount, so, it's a, I guess it's a budgetary control, whether or not you want us to encumber it, and then we can take care of the paperwork afterwards. It's in process.
If, if I may, I just, I think that, I think it's good, good practice to encumber the money, but it's also good practice to have a contract before you, before you encumber the money.
Okay.
It was just one that jumped out at me, sorry.
No apologies.
Um, for the most part, we really haven't spent very much money, I know you had some questions, I'm gonna let you roll on that.
Um, just, real quick, um, page four, uh, Collected Treasurer Software? That was for an upgrade, software upgrade, or, or some such? Okay, because that line is pretty well shot already. I, I'm assuming that most of these are just, you know, things that we know, um, one-time renewals or things like that. I can barely hear you, Audrey, honestly.
That's okay, so that, that was just a software upgrade to the Collected Treasurer? It says Collected Treasurer Software. We, we have spent.
I think, I think it's her maintenance agreement that she has to sign, that she has to pay, and she has to pay that upfront.
That's the annual.
The first, um, month of July.
Okay, perfect, yep, um.
But I'm sure she could provide you with a copy of the invoice if you, if you want to see it.
No, that's fine, like I said, I, some of these jumped out, but then, it's, okay, they gotta be. Um, I'm a little concerned on one line item, page nine. Um, we're actually over budget already? And I don't know, you know, it may be a very good reason, just don't know.
Which, um.
On page nine?
Uh, longevity?
Yes, that's true, he's requested a two hundred dollar, um, transfer.
From another account?
I don't know, I don't have the transfer with me, I just received it today.
Okay, I mean, within his budget?
Yes, within his budget, he knows he's over the longevity.
Perfect, okay. Um, on page thirteen, probably again, just a one-time kind of buy, a DPW admin clothing allowance?
That's usually contract negotiations. They're allowed to purchase clothes, and they do it.
They just do it all, all at once? Okay.
Seen that before, those receipts.
You could ask him, he's here if you wanted to.
I don't have to, I know what it's for. Right.
And there's one other, one other account, um, on the Beale's Memorial Library, it's slightly overspent already, they're aware of that, uh, page nineteen. Are the contractual service?
Again, I think that's probably a case where the bill is for the year, comes at the beginning of the year, and, um, by coming at the beginning, by paying it right away at the front.
Right.
Generally, there's a discount that comes with that.
Okay, so, so that deficit that line item will be handled by a transfer within the, uh, within the accounts, okay.
Anybody else have any, you have any more? I see you're going through your list. Are you all set? Mrs. Genowetz?
I'm all set, those are the ones that stand out, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Audrey? Yes, thank you very much.
Yep, we're all set, thank you. Okay, we have some appointments.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, if I may just touch base, uh, the last time we met, it was the fourteenth, and you had indicated that at that time you were still waiting for, from the school department, um, their transfers and such like that to close out, because we had until July fifteenth. Did you in fact get what you needed, and that is taken care of, or is there still something still open?
There is still something open, yes.
Okay.
There is, uh, a negative balance in their, uh, school appropriation budget that still needs to be addressed.
And what's the, uh, plan on getting that addressed?
I haven't heard of a plan yet.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Parkett?
There is a seventeen thousand dollar, I would say discrepancy into the reason for the deficit. Uh, we just can't, because it was from prior year, if you want to get into the technical details, these were encumbrances that were paid in August of two thousand fourteen, that were from FY fourteen. So, their prior year bills, we were brought in, as you know, and so, uh, the question is, it's just a matter of, we want to bring it to the school committee and determine what the school committee's request for action is. We're not disputing that there's seventeen thousand dollars, but we were going on the fact that here it is, the end of the year, and this is the first time it was brought to our attention that there was a deficit in those accounts, because we were going on the activity showing that they were indeed paid and carried over from FY fourteen. That not being the case, so we just need to talk with the school committee to see how they choose to address that.
Do you have a timeframe for meeting with the school committee?
I'm not sure when our next meeting is, I think it's, uh, next couple of weeks, so, that's.
Do you have a source that you're earmarking for the transfer?
Uh, I mean, possibly, we, we've got several potentials that we could do, as we discussed about, do we do some shifting from grants that are allowable, there's a balance potentially in school choice, you know, so. But it's just a matter of, we can't unilaterally say, it's an FY fourteen bill, school committee. I, well, I say we can't, I would rather get their approval. Just my opinion.
The issue will be resolved.
I, I would like to think so.
Thank you, that's what.
I mean, seventeen thousand dollars, oh, that's a para, you know, that's a concern, I would say, from the school committee's point of view, is that, you know, we're going on a fact that from fourteen to fifteen, the impression from the school was that there was a balance carried forward in encumbrances to cover these bills, and they were not. And this is news to us as of right now.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I understand this is news to you just now, but I have to be very honest with you, your, your comment about you hope it will be taken care of, or some paraphrase, that disturbs me greatly, because it, it needs to be taken care of.
Yes, I mean, it's just a matter of, I mean, for me to say to you right now, yes, it'll be taken care of from school choice, yes, it'll be taken care of from shifting grants.
No, I'm not asking you to identify where it's coming from, but, I, I've made my point, thank you.
Okay.
I'm all set.
All set? All set?
Yes, I'm set.
All set?
Think so.
Okay. Okay, we have some appointments, um, the Winchun Cultural Council appointment, uh, Mr. James Cron, if I pronounced that correctly? Asked to be appointed on to the Winchun Cultural Council, there was some information for that?
Yeah.
Right here? He's served on some different, uh, projects I've been involved with, received funding through the council, I would, great opportunity to help the council.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, so can I get a motion to, uh, approve the appointment, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also. We have a, a notification from, uh, Mr. Robert O'Keefe, that he wanted to be on the planning board, and the planning board voted in favor of that. Can I get a motion to approve that, please?
Mrs. Genowetz, excuse me, but, we're not appro- accepting or?
Appointing, right?
He's already on the board.
You could affirm.
Affirm, thank you, that's what, um, I vote to affirm, uh, the appointment of Robert O'Keefe to the.
Just want to get the technical terms, yep.
Planning board.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have, uh, another appointment, uh, that was recommended, uh, three to one, for the planning board, from Mr. Bertie Gould.
I move to affirm the appointment of Bertie Gould to the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, this would be an actual appointment, not.
Okay, so.
Thank you, I move to appoint Mr. Gould to the, uh, Winchun Planning Board.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, thank you. Mrs. Genowetz, yes?
I was still, I, I had a question, what, what was the difference between the first one, O'Keefe and?
Because he was already sitting on the board.
No, one was, the slot had been open for over thirty days.
Oh, okay.
So they get a point, okay.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a capital planning committee vacancy, uh, board of selectmen appointment.
Didn't we already, uh, I thought we already appointed Barbara?
The capital planning?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry. Check into that, okay.
Okay. You've got it in the notes, right? Then we're all set. Okay, alright. Okay, we have some, uh, list of vacancies as of July two thousand fifteen. The Conservation Commission is still looking for two vacancies, two, two applicants, the Cultural Council, there's many vacancies, uh, the Fence Few Field Drive, one vacancy. Library Trustees, two vacancies, Parks and Recreation Committee, one regular member vacancy and two student vacancies. Uh, two students could be from the high school of Murdock Middle School, uh, one planning board alternate member, and a zoning board of appeals, two alternate vacancies. That takes care of that. Okay, next up is our Town Manager Search Committee appointments, um, we all got in the mail a list of, um, applicants. And what we've, what we've done so the general public will know is we've taken the list of applicants, each person has put their name on it, uh, their initials or whatnot, and wrote yes and no, I will tally them up, and then we'll read off the seven finalists.
I didn't put my initials on it, I didn't put my initials on it.
Yeah, while I'm doing that, we could take a five-minute recess, so can I get a motion for, so she's finished, for a five-minute recess? Well, do as all right, everybody's.
Want the recess now?
Yes, please.
Alright, uh, motion to recess for five minutes.
Can I get a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, we're going to recess for five minutes. Call back to session, uh, so I've counted and tallied the votes with, uh, Audrey, and I'd like to announce our seven search committee members. Ruth Diamichus, M.J. Glant, Bertie Gould, Jason Maury, Jessica Murdock, Felicia Nurseman, and Dave Romanowski. You seven now comprise the Winchun Search Committee for interim town manager. The new town manager, new town manager.
And thank you for those who applied.
And thank you for those.
If they want to do the interim, that's fine.
Yeah.
We'll get it, yeah.
We'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. To everyone else, thank you for your interest. Okay.
Oh, your, I got mine here, it's mine.
Okay. We have a, uh, order of taking on Harris Road Bridge. Uh, from Wendy. The final step required before advertising of the bids that will go out, need to record at the Registry of Deeds, once recorded, we can advertise to do the bid, bridge replacement. There are two separate orders for consideration for this vote, uh, this is Harris Road Bridge and portion of West Street and Harris Road. Good evening.
First of all, if I could just, first of all, if I could just take a second, um, and recognize the abutters, um, they all donated their easements, um, which saved the town a tremendous amount of money. Um, I did get quotes on appraisals, they ran anywhere from twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars to sixty-two hundred and fifty dollars, just for the appraisals, never mind what the property was worth. So, um, I think kudos to all the abutters who have donated all their easements, it made my, our work a lot easier. So, the next process, as you know, is to sign the order of takings for the bridge and the road, which you have in front of you, Judy's here to notarize your signatures once that's done. Once these documents have been signed, they will go back to Katie Klein, she's the attorney for Coperman and Page, working with us on this project, um, then she will record them at the Registry of Deeds. Once I receive those back, I will take the owner's diaries, which we kept a dialogue with all the abutters throughout the whole process, the affidavits, the orders of taking, and the certified town meeting votes, those will all go to Karen Axteau with Mass DOT, she will review all those documents, make sure everything's in order, and then she will issue the road certificate, and then at that point, we'll be able to advertise for bids. We expect that advertising to take place, uh, early August, and we expect construction to commence, uh, early next spring, as soon as weather allows.
Well, thank you to the abutters who donated their land, that was, uh, very generous of them.
That was huge.
And saved us town a lot of money.
Yeah.
So can I get an, uh, motion to order of taking on Harris Road Bridge? For the first one, please?
Move, are there any abutters here? Just out of curiosity.
I don't see any of them, I, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, uh, move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also, then we have the second one as presented, portion of West Street and Harris Road. Okay, motion to approve that as presented, please?
Motion to approve?
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
For discussion, please?
Sure.
Um, any sense of if there's going to be any more, um, land that we'll need to look at taking, or anything before this project is done?
Now, on this project, however, we are already working on the Royalston Road North Bridge project, which is the same, um, project as we are working on on Harris Road. We have already been in contact with Mass DOT, Jim Dalton, he's the bridge specialist, Al and I have been working with him already on that project, that's just in the very early stages. That project will most likely ramp up in seventeen, um, but as far as this project, no, we're, we're just about done.
Good, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. One more thing, um, we did get approved from chapter ninety, actually, today, um, to cover the legal fees and recording fees for this project, so all that will be paid for under chapter ninety.
Nice.
And, and so one more question, um, the easements on this piece as well, did the, did the owners?
They've all signed, um, documents of donation.
On this one as well?
Yep, and those are all going to be recorded at the same time.
Great, thank you.
And then we will notify them by certified mail of all their recordings of their easements.
Sure, alright, thank you.
And I will be also included a letter of thanks to accompany those on behalf of the town.
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, thank you. You need us to sign and?
Yeah, if you could sign, Judy's here to notarize your signatures, and then I'll take the documents back to my office. Thank you.
Okay, so while we're doing that, we're going to, uh, move to the end, the Town Manager Search Consultant, obviously, uh, so what we're going to do is, uh, acting town managers reports?
Thanks, Chairman.
Is red okay?
I got black, never mind.
I, um, I don't think there's, um, anything notable here that I, there's plenty notable here, uh, but, uh, I guess I would ask if there are any questions, I mean, our, continued to be our top priority is the finances of the town. Uh, as you heard from, uh, the town accountant, uh, we, um, we made some great progress over the last, uh, three to four weeks, in terms of closing up the budget gaps that we had. Uh, that snow and ice deficit is down to a, as I've indicated, much more manageable, nineteen thousand dollars, which, I like you, Mr. Chairman, I hope that we can, uh, pull some resources from a few different spots and fund that in FY sixteen, without any impact, uh, on the services, uh, in the town, and I'm, I am optimistic about that. The audit has begun, uh, so we're, uh, we're, we're on schedule now to have that completed by late October, early Octo- uh, late September, early October, in time to get our tax rate approved. That's going to be a challenge for every community this year with the number of retirements that have taken place in the Department of Revenue. There's fewer staff people there to get that work done. So I was speaking with the deputy commissioner the other day about this. And they, they recognized that this is going to be an issue. They're trying to get people in as early as possible. And there's going to be obviously quite a bit of attention focused on Winchton because of the issues that we've had. At the same time, they've been very active here, working with us. So they have a good knowledge of Winchton from the, from the start. And clearly, they've, they're aware of everything that we've accomplished over the last month, and they're very pleased with the progress that's been made. In terms of FY sixteen, again, I think that it goes a long way that we've been able to knock that snow and ice deficit down. We've been putting the new state aid numbers in, the state budget, and looking at some of our other revenues. And I think we're, we're generally in pretty good shape for sixteen. You know, I'm somewhat careful when I say that. You know, we, but by all indications, you know, we're, we're, I think we're going to be doing okay. I do think that there's some savings that we can realize. The health insurance is one that really won't impact sixteen, but it will affect seventeen. And I've already sent a couple of documents to, to Linda during the meeting here that I hope to get out to you for the next meeting about the municipal health insurance reform. And I do think that there's some real opportunities there for the town. But by all means, we need to, we need to take a careful look at that and have discussions with our collective bargaining groups. But as of right now, the last numbers that I just saw, as I was flipping through those, is it's, the state has saved in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars to cities and towns of the state. So there's some real opportunities there for the, for the town of Winchton as well. The energy costs is the other area, as I've indicated, the, in a little bit later in my report here. The solar farm is not going to be on for probably sixteen to eighteen months. There are several issues there. The interconnect with National Grid has expired. So that needs to go through the National Grid process again.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Could I ask a question? Could you tell me what that delay was in your, in your report? You just said due to the delays. It's going to be another sixteen. But you didn't say what those delays were.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, obviously, I wasn't here for, for that, so it's hard to say everything that was in there. Certainly, there was one company that the agreement was signed, the town signed with, that was subsequently sold to Sun Edison. The negotiations that took place over that period of time delayed the, the project. I think that was probably the biggest delay that I see. And I guess I would point to that. There may be more to it that I'm not, I don't have at the top of my head right now, but that would be the big one. And so what that means is that the interconnect expired. They have to go through National Grid again. National Grid, as you saw here tonight with the polls, they're, they have their way of doing things, and they need to go through that process again. The other issue and probably more problematic is that the state's net metering credit program, the cap, has been reached. And the question that's out there right now is whether the legislature is going to do something to keep that net metering credit program going. There's some opposition from the utilities and some businesses in the state. But there's quite a bit of support from the solar advocates and solar industry and environmental groups to keep the solar net metering credit program going. So in the meantime, they're moving forward to do their, to get the interconnect. They're going, moving forward with the permitting. But once all of that takes place, then it has to go through the process of construction. So that's why we're looking at the sixteen to eighteen months. But without those net metering credits, that's, that project could grind to a halt completely.
Again.
Yeah, indefinitely.
Indefinitely or permanently. However, I do think that there's some, you know, and this will obviously happen a year plus from now, probably. And by the way, I've worked with town council on this, and we're keeping all of our options open on this. But right now, we don't see anything that's a breach of contract with Sun Edison. But there may be some other opportunities down the road. If it doesn't work out exactly as we would have thought, there are other some opportunities that we can look at. So we'll, we'll stay on top of that. In the meantime, you know, we're paying the basic rate for our electric service here in the municipal buildings, municipal facilities. So I've had Constellation Energy come in. They're a broker, provider of energy, lower-cost energy, that is affiliated with the Massachusetts Municipal Association. And they will be getting us some prices to see if we can knock that price down. We were paying last year sixteen to twenty cents, I believe, over the, over the winter per kilowatt hour. We should be able to get pricing down by going into the market at the right time for the right term. We should be able to get that down into the nine to twelve cent range. So there's some money that could be saved. I think the rough numbers were we could save thirty to forty thousand dollars by doing that. And that could have some impact for fiscal year sixteen that we, that we want to look at. I didn't, I, I, I know we're all aware of this, and I always, as I talk about fifteen and sixteen, I don't mention the health insurance trust fund deficit. Sort of just there. We know it's a deficit. We know we're going to have to close that. We know that one possibility is borrowing through the deficit legislation. I'm not crazy about building up the, that debt anymore. On the other hand, it's a very affordable rate, and it might give us more flexibility if we borrow through that and then hold on to our stabilization fund and, or we might want to do a mix. We need to really look at that more carefully. But first, I want to get a better handle on what sixteen looks like before we go any further with that.
So the current deficit is three million dollars that we borrowed from the state?
Correct.
If we were to borrow the six hundred thousand, which is the projected number?
Yeah, I think it's actually a little bit less than that. I think it's, I think it's, my recollection is just more like four hundred thousand.
Okay, so it's three million, four hundred thousand?
Right.
That's the projected number I've heard for well over a year?
Yeah.
And we were to borrow that money complete? And it would keep our payment at three hundred and ten thousand?
Roughly. Right. Yeah, and you know, at one point in time, you know, the deficit legislation actually provides for up to six million dollars. So obviously, it was, it was thought that it could be worse. So the positive side, it's not as bad as we thought. I think the actions that have been taken over the last number of months to hold that line has been beneficial. Now, if we can find a way to come up with that three hundred and ten thousand dollars without impacting services, that would be great. And that's what we're trying to work at now with some of these ideas. Cash flow, as I indicate, we did borrow one point two million dollars in revenue anticipation notes. The interest rate is point six percent just for six months. It'll be paid off. And we're optimistic. We need to go through some of these numbers some more with the treasurer. But we're optimistic that we'll be able to, this will get us behind, out from behind the eight ball with regards to our cash flow. And we'll start, we won't have this problem in the future. I do think that there's some opportunities here with tax title. I know that in the past, the town has turned over various properties to the redevelopment authority. We're looking at that, revisiting that to see how these new tax title properties should be handled. Because certainly, the town could use the money. Personnel updates. We did have an issue. We did hire a temporary DPW worker. We're also looking at hiring someone for the treatment facility. There's a couple of positions at the DPW that we're, we're looking at. But I'm also working with the director to look at the way, how we staff and the, actually, the system of staffing that we use that, and I know that there were a number of positions authorized at the recent town meeting, and there were some vacancies. But we're looking to see if maybe we need, we don't have to move forward with all of those at this particular point in time to help us with the sixteen problem and build them instead into a longer-term plan. The DOR report, you've all had a chance to see that. It's good, interesting reading. We have the DOR coming out on the seventeenth. And we'll be setting that up with the Finance Committee and the School Committee, as well as the finance staff. Police station, that's going back out to bid. We made some changes in the drawings. We've cut off the Sally Port off the back. We have taken some of the site work, and DPW's going to be doing that. There'll be money set aside for them to, to do that work for materials and other labor that needs to be brought on or contract work. But we think we're at a point now where we can move forward with that project, get that out to bid, and get that one done. So that's what's happening right now. We'll have a better, we'll know exactly where we are on that come early fall.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I was reading the Winchton Courier, and I, I thought, because something's bothered me about that police station being right downtown and taking up that valuable real estate space, that we might have turned into something, you know, rented out or something. I understand that the building is bought, but...
Excuse me. Could you speak a little bit louder?
When I was reading the Courier, I was, I realized the Poland, no, the Marvin School is now empty. Did we ever look at something like that for maybe the police station? Get it out of our Main Street?
I've never looked at that. I think I've worked under the assumption, or belief, if you will, that there's been a number of, quite a bit of time has lapsed since the project was first proposed, which has driven costs up dramatically to do this type of work. That particular building does have cells already in it. Cells are expensive to put into a building. And there's been money invested in this already. And walking away from it at this point in time would be basically losing the money that's already been put in. So I don't know. That's, that's sort of my sense. I mean, I realize too, I do, I do appreciate the idea that, you know, you need to have, that Main Street needs, Central Street, needs a lot. It's got a number of empty storefronts, this just being one of them. And my sense from a, the perspective, sort of a planning perspective, is that it doesn't hurt to have your municipal functions all in your downtown area. And by that, I would include your town hall, your library, your police station. It brings life to your street, that there's actually activity taking place there. It's not a taxpaying entity. But it has to go somewhere. And if it helps with the image of your main corridor, to have a police station there, a police presence, there's some value to be gained from that. But that's just my sense as an outsider coming in and looking at it from the planning perspective and looking at your downtown and looking at the numbers and looking at how much time has gone by. So if you wanted to move it at this point, you'd have to do it all, do all of your engineering and architectural work all over again. I don't know if there's a, you mentioned it's a school that's empty? Is it a town-owned school?
Yep.
Okay. So you wouldn't have to buy it necessarily?
Building?
Marvin, Marvin School.
School Department still owns it.
But weren't they going to turn it over?
They did not turn it over.
So it would have to be declared surplus by the school department before they, before that could take place?
Right.
There may be, I don't know what their long-term plans are, but they may have some needs for that. So all of this being said, to move it forward.
Right, right, right.
We did this.
Nope, I was just thinking.
Sorry, are you two, you all set?
Yep.
You said, Mr. Lynch, you said we put a lot of money into this project. Do you have an estimate how much really we've put into it so far?
I want to say somewhere in the vicinity of probably nine hundred thousand dollars between the sale and the architectural. And I'm, that's pulling right off the top of my head, but I know that the, the sale of it was six hundred thousand, so...
Eight twenty-five?
Eight twenty-five. So then you look at the architectural work that would go into this. It's gone out to bid three times. That costs money. And at the end of the day, having all of this being said, you're going to get a police station, albeit not completed. It's going to need a Sally Port to put on at some time. It's still going to need some interior work that is not included in this. You're going to have to depend upon volunteers, Monticentus students, or whatever the case may be, or delaying some of this. You're going to be into a police station for two and a half to three million dollars. Which I will tell you, I will tell you this, that that's the envy of a municipality. You know, whether there's savings that could have been realized along the way, I don't doubt that. On the other hand, there's, a police station for this kind of money is, is pretty good. It's pretty good. Most police stations now, I think Gardner's spending twelve million. I know that I spent...
Well, like, big town.
Fifteen years ago, in the town of Chelmsford, I spent about six million dollars, and that was tight. You know, that, that was, we had to really fight to get it in at six. One of the issues I think people have to, in, unless you're working, and I, I hope this doesn't come across the wrong way. Unless you're working in this all the time or on a regular basis, the Massachusetts municipal bidding laws are wonderful. Except they cost money. It isn't a case that you, one, you pay prevailing wage, which tends to bring the price up by some percentage. The bigger issue is actually filed subbids that you have to, you can't just put a, this project out. You can't just shop it around to the local people and say, "Give us a price." You have to advertise this in the central register. It has to go out with separate bids for electrical work, plumbing work, HVAC work, carpentry work, painting. Trying to think. There's a whole num, there's a whole number of trades that would be necessary in this building. You put those all out to bid, and there's quite a bit of paperwork that goes with these bids. Many times, local bidders aren't interested in doing this kind of work. The idea that they're going to be paying prevailing wage to people that they normally pay substantially less. They pay market rate here, but they'd have to pay prevailing wage over. With all the paperwork that's needed, it just isn't worth it for them to get involved. So then you end up with bidders out of, you know, quite a distance away, who, if they're going to come out here, are going to charge you accordingly. And then, after you get through the filed subbids, then you have to put it out to a general contractor. You then ask for the new set of bids for the general contractor to give you a price based upon the filed subbids plus what they're going to do, plus coordination. And so it's, it's, it's a much more complex process than, you know, a business would go through, or certainly a homeowner would go through in building a house or a business building. And that's just the way the law works. So again, I think that, you know, looking at this, and I, I, again, I'm coming in as, I've been here six weeks. It's not, I, I'm sure that there are places here that could have saved money, but there are other places that it has saved money. And when it's said and done, you'll be into it for three million dollars. Another project was the library. We heard about, I think we talked about that a little bit tonight, but that's moving forward. The funding is in place for that project. And that's just a, you know, an... The funding is in place for that project, and that's just a, you know, an accessibility project really, more than anything else, but it also will add some more usable space to the library. We've talked about the solar farm. The transfer station, we've, I've taken it upon myself to open that up on Thursdays, working with the DPW director. We identified that there really wasn't that much in the way of savings. I mean, you do have the individual that's staffing it that could be sent off doing something else, but it's a day, and so we felt that that was worthwhile, at least for the time being, to, for the convenience of the residents. And we're looking at some, DPW director's looking at some savings. He's come forward to me with some savings that seem to make sense, you know, how do we maintain the area or mow it? Are there ways that we can cut down on those costs? So they were using dag tags as opposed to the trash bags. Seems small, but that could save several thousand dollars, which could help close that gap in the, that enterprise. The other staffing change I meant to mention up at the top there was the, in the planning department, the way the budget was structured, it didn't really lend itself to having funding available for a director. It has money for the planner, but nothing for the director, but we've, and the planner is only part-time, but there are so many projects taking place here in the town, including the administration of all of these grants that we have from the state or federal government, as well as from the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation that have to be administered, and there wasn't money set aside for that. And so, on at least a temporary basis, we're allocating some money out of DPW, because many of the DPW projects, to help with that administration, but only until, really till the fall town meeting, at which time the question could be put to the voters as to whether to fund that to, fully. In the past, the way that that department has been funded is, there's been a planner, but there's also been a full-time director paid for out of grant money. And the problem is, when that grant money goes away, you don't have a director any longer. And there's so much going on in the town that needs to be coordinated, that money should, the director really should be funded from the, there should be a different way of doing it, so the director is fully funded, and maybe grant money can offset that in a way, but you wouldn't make the position wholly dependent upon, its existence wholly dependent upon the grants, because then you lose all the progress you've made if suddenly the grants don't happen, which in fact, the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, was not awarded to the town this year. So that was money that was going to be put into some paving projects, some housing rehabilitation. So we need to, we need to do some work on that, and I just wanted to buy some time because of the projects that we have, so we're working through that.
And Brittany, do we know why we didn't get the grant? Like, was there some reason, or did they not give you a reason? I'm just wondering, do they?
They would probably, they might give us some reason. We haven't, I haven't talked to them yet about that.
Just curious.
I know that the, for instance, I know that the town of Lancaster and the town of Shirley just got a grant. They did a regional grant, and they got money. You know, I don't want to, people at, see, I could, at Housing and Community Development not like me, may not like hearing me say this, but sometimes it comes into, you know, the town of Winchun has done very well in getting grants, well, they have to spread the money around a little bit to make sure that everyone's being affected positively. So that could be it, but I really don't know, you know? So hopefully we'll find that out in the next couple of weeks. Talk about the state budget. Then the other issue is that there was, and I know this came to the board, there was a complaint on some, speaking of CDBG, there was a CDBG paving project on the Highland Street area, and there were some driveway aprons that people weren't happy with the way they were paved. And I indicated to the board in my last report that I had reviewed the photographs and the reports that I had received, and I concurred with the staff, and I went out and showed that I can change my mind. I spoke to the people out there, and I looked at the driveways, and there are some issues there that I think need to be addressed. So, DPW director and I talked about it, and he's in agreement that we can, we really need to improve something with those driveway aprons, so we will be redoing those in the fall, at relatively minimal cost.
Sure.
And that's all I have for my report that I was encouraging to speak on.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Through you two, Mr. Lynch. The closed bridge, any word? I know we were trying to put feelers out to see if there was any additional monies that we could get to get that bridge repaired done? Any, any movement on that?
I don't have anything to report this time. I do have a meeting scheduled in early August with the state legislators, and I'll be talking to them about what we might be able to do to move that along. I mean, it's, I don't, I don't mean to minimize this, but it's a short stretch to connect those two roads, so the detour isn't that onerous. Frankly, the biggest issue with that detour is that intersection of, is that Hall or Ash? Trying to, I'm sorry, I don't remember all my streets. Yeah, Ashton Warren, thank you. Not bad. That, that intersection is very bad. And so I was out there with the DPW director and the police chief one day looking at it, and I was putting on my traffic engineering hat to try to come up with something, and so we're still working through some ideas for that. That's the biggest issue right now that I see. But we need, we want to get that bridge back up, but it just needs the resources to...
Yeah, I know that now is not an issue, but come a, come a sleet snowy day, coming across and then trying to make that curve up the hill without being able to get that speed up?
Yep.
I know the school buses and owls talked about.
I don't see anything happening necessarily with it this year.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, the number of deficient bridges across the Commonwealth is such a, that's another challenge that we have, is that...
All right, thank you.
Okay. We're going to ask the town manager to leave at this point?
Yes, I'm going, I'm going to ask to leave. I know that you've got an issue there, that I have a, that I submitted a proposal, and I think it would be in the best interest of everyone if I recuse myself and go back to my vacation. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in.
Okay, while we're waiting for him to do, we have minutes from June eighth, two thousand Joint meeting with the BOS and the school committee. Everybody see any issues with that? Motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also. We have, we don't have minutes from the twenty-third. We have minutes from June thirtieth before town meeting. No one sees any issues? Can I get the motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also, thank you. And you had minutes from July fourteenth, the joint meeting with the FinCom. Nobody sees any problem with them? Can I get those as presented?
Move as presented, and kudos for getting these done in less than a week.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain, I was not there. Okay. We have a town manager search consultant. We have a...
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I know that we have three proposals in front of us. My thought on this is that we allow the newly appointed town manager search committee input on this. What do you feel that this should be a...
I'm going to say no. I'm going to say it should be our decision, because we're the ones putting this forward. We put out the information for them. We have three people that responded, and when it came all said and done, the company that Mr. Lynch represents came in at the lowest bidder, which I, again, I'm going to say from my perspective is win-win, because he knows what we're looking for, he's in the town. I don't see an issue with that.
And can we also clarify, he came in as the lowest bidder without really knowing the prices of the other bidders as well?
Oh, yeah, no, totally blind. He had to, he had to do this totally blind, and he was not, he's not privy to it, that's why he's left.
Right.
And it was calculated...
Well, I gathered them.
Linda gathered them, so they were calculated up. But, yeah, he did come in at the lowest bidder. Again, I look at it from a different perspective. I look at it as from win-win for our point of view, because he's here, he'll know what we...
And we know him, as well.
And we know him, yeah. So, I mean, everybody that's going to be involved with him will know him, so, one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, in that we know him, you know, he's done a great job.
Right.
So we, you know...
And I think he knows what we're looking for, so it gets half the battle.
Absolutely.
So can I get a motion to approve this as the, the, oh, the town manager search consultant to be awarded to Community Paradigm Associates LLC?
Mr. Chair, just because we do have somebody from the committee in the audience, could we clarify just how much money that we would be saving? Not only do we know him and he knows us, but the amount of money?
It's substantial.
Is, and my math is terrible, but seventeen five and a half, so we're like saving eight thousand dollars or more.
Right.
Yeah, it's a substantial savings.
I just, to me, you know?
Yeah, I mean...
Not that everything's bargain hunting, but...
One was seventeen five, one was fifteen.
Yeah, and he come in at seven five.
And then...
So it's huge.
Seventy-five hundred.
Huge, huge.
Huge savings.
So, and it's not that we're looking for the lowest bidder, but it kind of, as far as I'm concerned, it was win-win.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, before we take a vote, I think it's also, I think it would be acceptable, acceptable for us to definitely thank the other bidders as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think anyone that submitted a, either a letter of submission to be included should be thanked for stepping forward, but I also like to thank the two people that other bidders, companies that gave us proposals for this, because again, you don't, you don't do this willy-nilly.
We appreciate your willing to help.
So can I get that motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get it seconded, please?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also. Also, can I get a motion to let me execute the contract by signing it tomorrow, instead of waiting?
A motion to what?
I didn't vote.
Execute the contract tomorrow. I can, I can sign it tomorrow versus waiting two weeks to do a vote again to sign it.
Oh, sure. Mr. Chair?
What's that?
I'm going to abstain from that vote. I did not make my vote.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm going to vote no.
On what? Which one are we voting on? That?
On that, yes.
Okay.
So it would be four one.
Four one, okay.
Yep, on principle.
Excuse me, can you just clarify which one you're voting?
Yes, on the motion to assign the contract to Community Paradigm Associates.
Okay, on the second one, is to allow me to sign the contract to execute the contract. Can I get a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Austin, did you vote?
Waiting for you.
This is just allowing you to sign the ultimate contract?
Allow me to sign the contract and get it underway, correct.
And this, this, this isn't, you know, this is just with respect to let them start doing their work, right?
Correct.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. Five, five zero. Other than that, we have our August meeting schedule, which is coming up, which we now find to be quite filled. If you could give me the dates, please?
Well, August tenth?
Yeah, August tenth is the first one.
The seventeenth is the DOR.
DOR. And then the twenty-fourth would be our second regular meeting.
So we have three, three meetings in a row in August?
I'm, I'm out of town on the seventeenth. I will not be able to make that meeting.
Okay.
Vacation pre-planned.
That's not a problem.
It was booked last year.
It's fine. Other than that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye at nine twelve. We're adjourned.